All right.
Thank you.
It's a little bit after seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and start the meeting November thirteenth, 2012. A little bit after seven. I apologize for being late. We had a habitat meeting and Christie was able to get here on time today, but I had failed my day again. Apologize. I'm gonna start out with Mayor's comments. When I spoke enthusiastically about the possibility of coming in under budget on the Locust Street project, everyone laughed at me. And it looks like I'm going to be wrong. We're gonna be most likely a little bit over budget. As of the bills that are included in this packet, we will have spent $444,000, nine, We've approved $450,000, so we're $5,000 under that. And right now, we have about another five weeks to go, we're estimating, on the project. The good news is, all the expensive stuff is paid for. We've got 100% of the piping underground. We've got all our boxes in. I'd say we probably have about 85% of our curving in. We'll have a little bit more expense in labor, a little bit more expense in concrete, but the heavy equipment, the excavators and the gentleman operating that are no longer a municipal expense. So, in order to complete this project, I think the board would need to approve more money from the transportation fund to see it to its end. The good news is, we have in our transportation fund, $501,000, 501,361.52. So, we have over half a million in our transportation fund.
Still really have some asphalt there, too.
Yeah, and there will be a little asphalt thing there. They're gonna add a little bit to center of the road to create a crown in that road to help the water runoff. That's something we didn't anticipate when we got into the project. Curbing gutter is fine if the water runs to it. If the road's flat and doesn't have a crown, then there's some issues with standing water. So, when they do go and fill in the sides with asphalting, they're gonna put a little bit down the center to create a little bit of a crown.
Has King or anybody else given an estimate of what it's gonna take to complete?
No. My guess is, I'm guessing, this is just a guess, probably about 60 grand for that last month. So, we're looking at being 50 to 60 grand over budget. That is the update on Locust Street. As far as Mayor's comments, I don't have anything else. Next thing is the modification to the agenda. Are there any modifications?
I'll grab one.
Okay.
Shows I wasn't at the meeting, but it shows I voted several times. I don't remember giving anybody my vote, but I'd like to have my name added to the roll.
We took a vote. See if anybody cared if you were getting it. You lost.
Any other modifications? I see none. Citizen comments? Do we have any citizen comments this evening?
Yeah. I was just wondering if we've had all of this stuff going on here with the jury university and there's been some things underway for a little bit of some community gardening going on. One of the things that was discussed was putting in a possible skate park for the kids. And I had Vicki Steph come in here with me tonight. She apparently has worked together in the past to try to gather some information up with for that. And I was just wanting to know if there was any way that we could kinda get something started and maybe get at least talks or get that on the agenda for next month that we can let people know at the next meeting to come on out and just kinda start maybe getting that ball rolling. She seemed to, I don't remember what all the details were of it, that you guys had some kind of property that was able to be used for that. Do you remember where that was?
Yeah, we have our industrial park.
Yes. That's what we were talking about, down there on the 10 acres. And I've come up with a way, I think, that the community itself, not just the city, but the whole community can work together to get a skate park, maybe a tennis courts, and stuff set up down there.
Okay. Sure, sure. The goal, though, and I think the need would be that the skate park would be ancillary to one of our parks. So...
Well, I mean, that's fine, but I was told the 10 acres and that was just, you know, I mean, if you wanted to put it in with one of the parks, that's fine. I mean, but I was just, I just came up with like having a civic center there, but I see you've got some other ideas, which is great, I think. That looks good. But I just, I was just going from what we had discussed before.
Yeah, and I spoke with Dorothy Peacock, and a skate park is very dear to her heart as well. Matter of fact, she brought me some information on it, and I have that in my office. We could find a time to get together, if you'd like, and I'll call Dorothy and we could have a meeting outside of the Alderman meeting and discuss the feasibility of that and what it would take. We do have the capital improvement sales tax. That money can certainly be invested in something like a skate park, tennis courts. That money would be perfect for the enhancement of our existing infrastructure in as much as our parks and adding on to it.
Have you ever thought about getting the commissioners to help us?
That...
Hey, they're willing to match funds?
Are they?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. I mean, if they are, that's wonderful, and I'm not, I'm not gonna...
If I can, well, I've talked to them.
Okay.
And I've talked to some other people. David Moore is very interested in getting something going.
Yeah, I, I think...
Mick McGuire. I've talked to these people, and I've talked to the commissioners. I mean, they would be willing to help get something going. I don't know how much they would come up with. I have no clue about money wise. But this is something that can, some of this stuff you've got on this wall can be done.
Oh, I agree.
But it's gonna take more than just the city, I think, to do it. I think it's gonna take the whole community.
I agree. I couldn't agree with you more. Let's, after the meeting, let's schedule a time we can get together and pull our resources and get people together who wanna fight for this, and I'll be happy to fight right along with you, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other citizen comments? I see none. All right, minutes and bills.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I have a citizen comment.
Sure.
I live on 500 West Mill, and she's an empty lot, and she's been that way for the 10th winter now. And I realize everybody got their lawsuits and stuff like that in and got their money and stuff like that. Except, I haven't been able to get my lawsuit in, and I'm living on that empty lot. And I was wondering, is anything gonna be done about it?
Okay, is this the situation where you have the camper trailer there?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're the gentleman's got the shower rigged up outside with a curtain?
Yeah, semi-curtain, yeah.
We've had numerous complaints from people in the public that they've seen you naked out there showering, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, those reports are false.
Okay. At any rate, there had been concerns, numerous, I would guess, just off the top of my head, at least half a dozen, being conservative, in the last year and a half about someone living in a camper there. We do have zoning ordinances that relate to that, and at this time, the city is deeming that to be unacceptable.
Well, are you gonna give me a kick-out notice?
We sent you a letter. Our city attorney, I believe, has drafted that. Is that correct? Or does that come from the administration?
I have to, I have to speak to Debbie.
Yeah, we would need to look at that and see where we're at with that and that process.
So, in other words, my house burns down, and I get left out there for 10 winters? And you're just now zoning it out?
Yes, sir.
Just now?
Yes, sir.
That would give me a lawsuit, wouldn't it?
I can't give you legal advice.
I'm really trying not to have a lawsuit against this town.
No, I understand that. I understand that. And I won't give you legal advice about it, I'm sorry.
All right.
You're free to retain an attorney, sir.
That would require a job that I'm also unable to get in this town.
And I can't give you a job either, sir.
So, I just run around and that's it?
I mean, that's, that's up to you.
Isn't that unconstitutional, against state law?
I, sir, I can't, and I won't give you legal advice.
I can't even count the numerations of just how many laws have been broken.
Okay. Well, maybe you should consult an attorney, sir. Do you have anything else?
Well, I can't afford an attorney, that's why I'm here.
I understand. You might try legally.
What are they gonna do for me?
You'll have to ask them, sir.
Is that it?
Do you have anything further?
No, that's about it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Minutes and bills. We have an amendment to the last October 8, 2012, minutes adding Wayne Rieschel's name to that roll. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Debbie, I already spoke to you about the municipal league bill that's the number one here, 48, that says for attendees to the Ball of your Meeting.
Yeah.
I did pay for myself, so don't pay for me if that's, if I'm on that list.
Martha was gonna call on them today, but I hope she had time.
I didn't have time. I do have enough to call to see, did anybody else pay?
I kinda think Larry Hicks paid for himself, too, but I can't say for sure.
I'll check with him. I would think they have it on.
And I attempted, once and I left there late, and I approached the cash register to pay, and they did not take our funds, but I'm happy to pay our way, as our way is due.
I also have a question about whatever this bill here is on top. The bill for $587.70, it says damaged entrance post labor plus plaster permit and bin set or pre-mix and bin sets, kinda hard to read. Why is this extra in here? Is it not included in our, the printout that you gave us? Is that why it's extra?
Yeah, it's not. Yeah. Andrew asked us to go ahead and submit it for payment after we'd already processed all the invoices.
But that, I believe, has been taken care of. Well, Wayne Rieschel, is that correct?
It's my understanding, Donna got a call from the insurance company. This is where one of the auditors, or the lack of, or whatever, backed over her post. And we called on it a couple of days ago, and she said the insurance had called her and had said they were gonna send her a check, so...
So, the city won't be liable for that amount, then?
Well, it's gonna be paid by the insurance. If, the only, the only problem was, the guy that worked out there asked her to pay him, and we would see that she got reimbursed, and she paid it, and she's looking to be reimbursed, which I think is appropriate. And it's just a question of, quite frankly, coming up on Christmas, I think she kinda needed the money, you know? And it was clearly our fault, you know, that our post got it. So, if, if the insurance company is gonna pay it right away, we just need to monitor it. And perhaps approve conditionally the payment of this bill if the insurance company doesn't pay it by the time they find you, so...
And my last one was on the, out of the transportation fund. It looks like we're paying Mr. Cheek $233.38 for mileage. Do we regularly do that for him every month? Reimbursed for mileage? What are we reimbursing him for?
Martha Moore does the bills, not I do.
That's all right. He submitted it, 'cause he doesn't have a vehicle, and that's what he was told to do.
He runs concrete for brake tests down in Springfield. Roger, a lot of times, will run those down when Roger makes his ordinary trip, but there are times that Roger can't. And there's times that Cheek will have to, gotta go out of Buffalo to get materials.
I think it's a better week.
Is it, I don't know, a pretty...
No. You told him to submit mileage.
I did?
She said back because he didn't have a vehicle.
Okay.
And so, he's been submitting one from the get-go. It's been there or not. We pull out, though.
I thought we approved that...
He doesn't normally go Springfield.
Two or three minutes ago, to reimburse him for his expenses.
It's, I guess, he's a point one with that, too. Just wouldn't drive now.
So, that's something we're gonna continue to do? We, that's what we, it's, I mean, because it's, that's a lot of money every month coming out of there. Could we find him a vehicle? I mean, do we have, we don't pay other people mileage to use their personal vehicles for their job?
Actually, we do.
Not on a daily basis. I mean, and he's running around Buffalo. Maybe we could, if he's gonna go to Springfield, send him to see a city vehicle.
Well, I mean, we try to send stuff from Roger as much as we can.
As chairman of your budget committee, that would be one thing I would recommend that maybe we could look at, is cutting out some of the mileage.
Do we have, do we have a vehicle? I mean, I guess the question is, do we have a vehicle available?
We don't. He just needs to drive around town. I could see how we could pay a mileage for that. It wouldn't be a lot. But if we're going outside of town for things, I think we should try to make a vehicle available.
Okay.
I'm making motion 20 pro per minute, so there you go.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
I'll call for a roll of the book.
James?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Jess?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
That motion passed? Part of my head report.
You might hold up just a little bit on that 95 bill.
Yeah, I'll, what I'll do, since you approved it, I can print it, and then we'll just hold it until...
It will be paid.
See what happens, and then we can just void it out of the system.
Okay.
It was paid for work because the insurance agency did not get the bill for quite a while.
Okay.
I mean, it's been handled, speed of the matter, so she should be paid according to my sources.
Yeah, they have been at it very long.
Wish I had sources.
You do have, but I think it's mine, too.
All right, our administration. Ms. Bolson, do you have anything for us?
If you guys have questions for me, I pretty much have been, just kind of an update of what's been going on. Auditors were here last week, so that had me and Martha both pretty busy, plus trying to get ready for council packets, so. The financials that were in the papers included in the packet, along with a kind of a brief rundown of cash versus fund balance for you, which wasn't in the paper. If you've gotten questions about it, I can answer it now or later. It won't match exactly what's presented when auditors present their report, which will be in a couple of months, because this is based on cash, and their report will be based on accounts receivable and accounts payable. So, it'll be off a little bit, but I can show you how they're written files later.
Any questions for Debbie? All right, animal control.
Good evening. I do not have any additions to my report.
Any questions for animal control?
I'd like to ask one question. I believe there were 79 animals picked up somewhere in that neighborhood. Are all those animals picked up within the corporate city limits?
Yes, I don't go outside of the city.
Okay, so all those animals...
Are, they can be, they can be either picked up or they can be dumped.
But they were all picked up within, I'm trying to get the county to pay your bill, so if we can explain that...
Yeah, they come to us in a variety of ways. People bring them to the town. I'm called to pick them up, or they can be tied in the town. It could be left at the park.
Can you tell me, the ones that are, that they bring to you, I would assume some of those people actually live outside the city limits?
There might be, you know, we have, short of calling somebody lying to you, you know, you will get a person that says, "I got, I got this animal in Woods parking lot." They may live outside the city, but they're coming from town as they're leaving town. We have to assume that they are coming from...
I'd see if we can't get the county to, you know, chip in with that.
Yeah.
We're a town of 3,000, and there are counties of 16,000 population. I think that they should share some of our exposures.
Yeah. We do not actively, we do not actively take anything other than what's in the city.
It was just a question that I needed an answer to. I'm sure there are blind, too, but it's what I need to know. Thank you, the county.
All right, any other questions? Our building inspector, sir.
I don't have anything to add to the report, but unless somebody has any question.
I do have a question.
We have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, go ahead. You go ahead. Well, if I recall right, about six months ago, we suspended part of the building code to, is that right, Wayne? To December?
Well, but it was not on new construction.
It's on the old one, right.
On the old houses built before.
Right. But was, was the wording not that we suspended it until December?
Well, it was an opt-out. They can still buy.
Yeah. It was an opt-out until January 1.
Opt-out till January 1.
After that, then you'll have to decide whether or not...
Okay, so we have to decide next month whether to put that back in?
Right.
Okay. I didn't know if it was January 1st. I had in my mind it was December, which would, we would have had to take action now. Thank you, Andy. Is my neighbor's slash garage carport need your approval now?
Yes. Did you see it had to have one of the sides taken out?
I see that. See the back end of the side?
Now it needs, now it needs the requirements.
Okay.
Is that a dangerous building concern?
No.
It's a new carport that was being installed, and she put it in as a garage. And if it's gonna be a garage, then it has to meet the building codes. If it's a portable carport, then it doesn't have to meet the building codes. And she put three sides on it, and the code says you can't have three sides. You have to have two open sides, so she came back through and took one side off.
With a car?
No.
With a car. Any other questions for our building inspector? All right, our fire department, sir.
I've just got two things that are other than what's on the report. Is there any questions on the report before we get into the other? All right, our storm siren, back in September, was hit by lightning. They're just now getting back to me on it. I've been working with the insurance adjuster. I'll just, this here explains what happened with it and the cost for the repair. I believe our...
I believe our deductible is the $1,000, so that'll be our cost out of it.
And then, he's gonna, he has to come in and check our speaker drivers that are up on top, but he has to have a truck to get up to do that. But that's what we know as of now, so the north siren on the town is not operational. So...
On the north side?
On the north side.
Andy lives on the south, so he probably doesn't cover much.
No, no, it is the south side. It is, it is the south one that's, it's not working.
That doesn't work, but I'll figure it out.
The north one does work, yeah. So, you're covered, but he's not.
Well, I mean, it is what it is. If it's damaged, we gotta take the money, spend out of budget, and spend it. We gotta have some.
I'm still working with the insurance adjuster. He wants to know about the speaker drivers, 'cause he wants to do it all in one shot. So, I'm gonna try to get Steve down here to get up there and check them, so that he can do it all, and so we can get it fixed. 'Cause it's gonna take probably two or three months to get it fixed, 'cause he has to order all that stuff.
It takes what?
It'll probably take two or three months to get it fixed, 'cause he has to order...
I don't think that's something that you just mess around with. I think it's something that you have to expedite and be repaired.
That's right. But yes, they still have to order all the parks, put it together, program it, and then come back and put it in. So...
I don't really believe that that's something I'd be expedited and repaired as soon as possible.
It's the whole, it's pretty well the whole system is shot, the whole thing, so...
So, you're saying, we know you, that we're gonna have to pay $1,000 out of your department. Everything's gonna be reimbursed by the, by the insurance company? Why not expedite everything?
If it's expeditable.
Just decide.
Well, it's more than just a bullhorn on a pole.
It's fixable. Anything fixable can be...
It's fixable.
Can be prioritized. And I think that's something that should be fixed immediately for the safety and the benefit of the people in the south side of town.
I said that one. And I can tell him that, yeah, we're gonna fix it regardless, and, you know, go ahead and do it, if that's what you guys wanna do.
They're gonna have to pay to get it replaced and fixed. It's not a negotiable item between us, nor negotiable item between the insurance company. They will pay the damage. That's the way the provisions within the policy read. And if it takes extra expense to expedite it, freight, anything, that's part of the repair, they'll have to do that.
All right.
Let's get it fixed. My opinion is, forget about the thousand. We're gonna pay it, but let's get it authorized. When that bill comes in, which will come in out of your budget in 30 or 60 days, but everything else, let's get it done.
Put the move on it.
And the second item is, Monty Beetz found a truck, a ladder truck for the city. He wants to purchase it and donate it to the city. It's, it runs, the pump runs. The only problem with it is, is there's a hydraulic problem on the bucket. Don't know for sure what that problem is. It could be just a line. The ladder does extend, but he wants to purchase that and donate it to the city. I told him, I just found out about it today, and I called him, and he told me, you know, I wanted to present it, present it, and he'd buy it, donate it to the city. We just went to the industry, obviously, insure it and fix it and put it in service. It'd probably take a while to put it in service, take a little bit of money, but...
What year is the truck?
1987?
Eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
Is it, has it been used?
Yes, it's got 18,000 miles on it, and what's the picture on it, say?
It's, I don't know.
It's up in Lynn Creek right now, but it's got 18,000 miles on it and so many hours. There's a whole description there, I hadn't...
Did you use one of those?
Yeah.
I mean, the city would use a bucket truck for a lot of things.
I assume we wouldn't have to worry about taking beds if you'd go and give it to us.
Well, at the time, you know, over the years, if we have the equipment sitting there, we can add to it until we get it repaired. It does, it's not something that has to be repaired immediately. Jim will know, I mean, it looks like it was just a little bit, well, that's, that's get torched, you know? That's something I think the city could use. Eventually, we could put it back into well shape. I think it was...
It'd just take a little time.
Yeah, 'cause we're not in a hurry. We set it down there and work on it as we can and as we can afford to out of the budget.
You get the industry lights up with this.
Yeah, I think that it's quite, it's an opportunity for the city to pick up a nice piece of...
That's exactly what I was...
It won't probably cost us over $300,000 to build a building to put it in.
It is a 100-foot stick.
That's definitely a lie. You know, nothing's free, but...
If the engine runs, that's nice.
Yeah, I'd say, I, I myself will make a motion that we accept the gratitude of Monty, if he's willing to give that to us with no strings attached. I think it's a great thing. We'll insure it, carry the insurance on it, and fix it up as we can. It's a great asset to get a ladder truck for a town our size.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll call for a roll of the book.
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Jim?
Can you tell Mr. Beetz we'd be happy to accept that truck?
We appreciate it.
In worst-case scenario, Larry will end up buying it auctioned at the very end.
Where is he?
And if he wants to throw in another fire truck.
Yeah, I'll tell him, I'll tell him.
Or an airplane, or a lamp, or a...
You know, nothing's free, but...
As long as the engine runs, that's nice.
Yeah, I'd say, I, I myself will make a motion that we accept the gratitude of Monty, if he's willing to give that to us with no strings attached. I think it's a great thing. We'll insure it, carry the insurance on it, and, uh, fix it up as we can. It's a great asset to get a ladder truck for a town our size.
Is there a second? Yeah, I'll give a second. All right, I'll call for a roll of the...
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Jim?
Can you tell Mr. Beetz we'd be happy to accept that truck?
We appreciate it.
And, and worst-case scenario, Larry will end up buying it auctioned.
Where is he?
And if he wants to throw in another fire truck.
Yeah, I'll tell him, I'll tell him.
Or an airplane, or a lamp, or a...
That's all I've got.
All right, thank you, Chief Higgins. Any questions? Parks and Recreation, Bobby is, uh, doing God's fault tonight, is that correct? All right, so Bobby is not here. Uh, we have his report, is that correct? Any questions regarding the report? Uh, police park, few parks.
We had a hundred and eighteen calls for service, sixty-eight traffic citations, one vehicle accident. Had forty-seven arrests involving nine warrants, twenty-three possession of contraband, crime warrants obligated by five. Had two each of stealing and disorderly conduct, and then one each of assault. No valid drivers, law enforcement, disturbance, have received stolen property and armed crime.
All right, any questions, uh, over police chief? I see none. Uh, water and streets, uh, I got a, a phone call, uh, from Roger about four-thirty-ish, and, uh, I, I was, uh, indisposed, or, I was busy. And Roger left a message and said, "Mr. Mayor, I completely forgot about the meeting tonight. I'm in Springfield. If you really need me to be there, please call me and I'll come a-running." Uh, I, I didn't get a chance to call him back and tell him either way, so I, uh, essentially excused Roger, uh, from the meeting tonight. Does anyone have any questions that would relate to what Roger does? I'll answer them if I can. Good news is, we don't have to pay him for tonight. All right, no questions. Uh, tax collection report.
Apparently, I forgot to put it in there. Thursday was really crazy. The auditors were trying to finish up. Martha was helping them, so I did counsel packets, which she's normally the one who does that, so... Apparently, I failed. I'll have that one and the next one for next month, so.
All right, thank you. Waste water treatment plant, sir?
The only thing that I need to tell you guys is, we have, I'm sure you're aware, started TVing the sewer lines. Uh, we've done about four thousand feet so far, so we're about halfway there on the project that I was gonna have them do. Any question?
How bad is it?
It's, I'll put it to you this way, out of the four thousand feet we've looked at, there's about six hundred feet that wasn't too bad.
Do you, you think aligning that section is going to, just to guess, how, how, how big of a percentage of our R and I is it gonna cure?
Oh, it, it, you can't tell. It'd probably be quite a bit, from what I've seen. Uh, we're to the point now, as soon as we get this done, then we need to get it evaluated by an engineering company who can tell us, this is what you need to do to take care of this situation. Uh, there are multiple problems on the, on this system, and I can, when we went out and measured it, we saw how high the flow was. It was, it went up the highest of any place we've looked. Now I know why. It, uh, it's pretty bad.
So we're probably getting a lot of bang for our buck, second?
Absolutely.
And when do you expect to be done, is what they're doing, Chris?
Probably first part next week.
Then you mentioned engineers. I assume that's something we will have to hire?
Actually, you guys are already under contract for this, because we were supposed to have done this two years ago, um, with Olson engineers to do this specific project.
We still have bond money left over, and that's what is gonna go towards this.
Right. And then, that contract is still the same price, or is it changing?
Yeah, no, it was just a fixed-price contract, and I've talked to him as recently as a month ago, and he still wants to do the project, so...
Can you tell me approximately what you think it was gonna run?
The engineering, I believe, let me just go pull the contract, because I know where it's at.
Just leave the line, Jess. Um, I talked to the guys that are doing the camera work now, and, uh, they deal with that. They said approximately twenty-five dollars a foot.
Ten thousand feet? No, I went up to only that, six thousand. Thirty thousand dollars?
I mean, I have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to do the whole thing.
To do?
Everything that I've looked at so far, seventy-four hundred feet.
Over seventy-four hundred?
Yeah, if, if we do it all. But see, that's why you need to have an engineer look at it. Because he can tell us, like, don't worry about this part, but worry about this part. That's why we need them.
Well, DNR is not gonna let you use those funds that we have without an engineer designing it.
For sure, I understand that. I was just trying to, I didn't want, I didn't want backside it with the big engineering field out.
And ju- just to clarify, the, the hundred and seventy-eight, uh, was for the entire?
Yes, the, the whole shooting match, the, everything.
Okay.
The whole eight thousand feet, or whatever.
Yes, sir.
If we have to use them.
Yes, sir.
And Debbie, how much do we have in bond money? About two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand is a guess, and I can look that up. It's right behind me. Um, we had contracted previously with Olson for forty-one thousand dollars for design. That includes design bidding and construction-based services.
Um, had any, have that been paid?
No.
So it will have to come out of syrup, or, out of syrup?
Well, no, it'll all come out of the bond money that you've got, that you haven't ever spent.
It will all come out of the bond money? We did not spend the original bond?
DNR's already approved that contract, because they thought we were gonna get on it quick.
But now, we didn't spend it, but we didn't sell a bond on that amount either, did we?
Yeah. No, the bond was sold for the whole amount.
So we have that much in reserve of the bond that we, of the bonds that we sold?
We have that much sitting there in a construction account related to the bonds.
Of the bond sold?
Yes, the bonds are all gone.
And these are monies that are budgeted, not really budgeted, but separate from what's in the...
It's actually separate, I mean, it's in safekeeping with, uh, United, uh, UMB Bank is who holds that, those funds. We don't actually have access to them without going through them.
Um, in addition to doing the work that we need to do with sleeving the lines, there are two or three places that we found that are gonna have to be dug up and addressed. Uh, specifically where the pipe is, is broken bad enough that you cannot sleeve it. Uh, that's what we need our engineer to evaluate and tell us. This is how you handle that situation. So.
It's a hundred and twenty-five-year-old system. I'm surprised it lasted that long.
And we actually hit some places that we could not get the camera through. It, it was that bad.
Well, it's, it's collapsed within that?
Yes. So.
Any other questions? Any other input?
No, that's good enough.
Uh, Budget Committee is not on the, the agenda here, but I'm gonna go ahead and, and add it. Uh, Budget Committee's, uh, scheduled to meet, uh, whether this week or next week?
This week, Thursday? I believe it's this Thursday. Thursday at one-thirty PM.
At City Hall?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Uh, moving on, water adjustments.
I'll make a motion that we approve water adjustments.
I'll second.
Call for a vote?
Jim? Jess?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, new business license?
I'll make a motion we approve the new business licenses. Licenses, licenses.
Can I add business?
There is Buffalo Bowl Pro Shop, Boggs's Barber Shop and Shave Parlor, H and H Barless, and there's also a special permit for nonprofit charitable enterprises, um, hard-to-hard outreach, and it says, "Without payment for license."
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, call for a vote?
Jim?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
That motion passes. Old business, uh, truck for Gus. Uh, now, Chief Higgins came up with a free truck. What have you come up with, sir?
Oh, boy, I should've known. Uh, it's absolutely free for eleven-five, so...
Okay. Now, now you, you and Roger have kinda sorted out a little bit of your issues. Roger's donated, uh, a truck to you for you to use. It's a four-by-four, is that correct?
That is right.
And it's a shiny new truck?
Uh, not really.
Okay. Does it put Roger that truck?
Uh, apparently not, because he told me that I could go ahead and use it whenever I wanted it. I know he's using it at this time.
Okay.
But, uh, he, he made it available to me and told me I could get it whenever I needed it, so... But it would be my truck as a treatment plan.
Okay.
So...
Possibly you can skim by it without a truck? But life would be better for the city if you had a newer truck?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe Chief could use the other, the, the truck you're using from Roger?
Either way, so...
Well, tell us what you found.
Uh, you, there should be a, a print out there for you guys on the, the two trucks. There's a Ford and a Dodge. Uh, the Dodge is the newer truck, but I was told, uh, that, you have to understand, I know absolutely nothing about mechanic. But they wa- I was told that the Ford...
You're in charge of the sewer system.
That's the sewer system. It's not a pickup truck.
Okay.
Automobile mechanics.
There you go, that's it. Uh, I was told the Ford is a better truck, even though it's a year older, so...
So it's a four-wheel drive? Are they four-wheel drives?
No, sir, they're two-wheel drive, but that's why Roger is making the old four-wheel drive available to us. In the winters, we'll have it to use. If we need it.
Fifty thousand miles on it.
So do you think, would you suggest that we, is that the one that you would prefer? Or do you think you can limp by for a while longer and, and see if we can find a four-wheel drive?
From what I have seen, from the, the efforts that we've made on trying to get a four-wheel-drive box truck, it's really hard. Uh, I'd like to have one of these two-wheel drives, and then keep Roger's as the backup for the winter work.
Or the bad.
Right.
The weather days.
So I'd have two usable trucks at the plant.
And it's my understanding that, uh, the water and sewer fund is different than the general fund. It's separate, kinda like the transportation, trying to find the year-end and see what your budget was at last year. And Debbie, if we did vote to purchase this truck, would it come out of the water and sewer fund?
If you voted to purchase it for Gus, yes.
Yes, okay. So basically, last year was it eighty percent, eighty-eight percent spending on the budget remaining? I would make a motion that we purchased the, which one was it? The older one, the two-thousand-and-four Ford?
Yes.
For, um, use at the sewer plant.
Now, the wise truck we bid, you raised cane because we didn't bid it when we went to purchase it.
This is different.
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's for the city of Buffalo.
It's the company that they used, the same company that they used for air extracts? If that's, if my understanding is correct, is that where these came from? Is that right? Okay, so we didn't have to bid because of where it's purchased from?
No any problems with any of them.
I'll second. Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
What?
Could I, could I get, could I get your motion changed a little bit?
Sure.
Uh, I like, I like to have the Ford as a primary truck, but I'd also like to have access to that Dodge in case the Ford isn't there anymore.
The Dodge that you currently have?
No, the Dodge is the second one on that sheet.
So if this one is sold already, then go ahead and, um, approve the purchasing of the...
Purchase the second.
Sure. They're the same price.
Have you seen them?
No, uh, I'm going to ask Roger to send Kenny up there with Daryl, my guy, have him look it over and make sure of what we're getting before we, you know, actually pull the trigger and get it. But, you know, I want approval that we can get it in case it is a good truck, and we can just, you know, drive it off a lot right then.
Yes, I will amend my motion to state, to buy the other one if the first one is already gone.
But I, and I just make a quick suggestion on the motion, uh, perhaps the, the better motion would be either-or, in case they get up there and the Ford's in bad shape, and maybe decide they want the Dodge.
Yeah.
Sure.
Or, I mean, it's your motion.
That seems fine to me.
Okay. So, so we have a motion to, that, that, that they buy either-or. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll call for a roll.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jim?
No.
James?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Jess?
Good question on the motion. Jim, did you vote no? I couldn't hear real good.
Yeah, I voted no. Reason I voted no, Jess, or Roger told me the other day that that truck was available to Gus at the time he wanted it.
Oh, yes.
Uh, that motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, new business, we have a pool proposal from the Y. Dominic is here. Uh, sir, you have provided us with four different, uh, pool proposals. Uh, and the difference between two of them, uh, has to do, uh, two sets of twos. Uh, the, the, the possibility of, uh, the price of emissions going up, and the difference between the other two, uh, is, uh, whether or not the fence between the kitty pool and the main pool is removed, which would necessitate an extra lifeguard. Is that correct?
That is correct. Y MCA policy would dictate that if the fence was lapped up where it is right now, that we would have to have a separate guard for that pool. Um, we, if we could take the fence down, leave the post, but just unclip the fence, chain-link fence, roll that back, that would allow us to safely guard two pools, uh, with the guards on hand without having to have a separate one there, and be cost savings for both the Y that we pass on to the city. The other two would be a, just to try and put as many proposals out there as possible. Uh, if we raise the rates just a little bit for daily pass and season pass, we could also, um, pass those savings along to the city to help out as well.
We, we do have four different, uh, proposals here. I've met with, uh, with Dominic and discussed those. Uh, proposal A, it leaves the fence up, and this is, necessitates, uh, an additional guard. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, proposal B, uh, that takes the fence down, or does that leave the fence up?
Proposal B would then, it would be the same thing, leave the fence up, but raise the rates.
Okay.
So that would bring it down a thousand dollars for the city.
Proposal C would be to remove the fence, which would not necessitate that extra guard, and leave the prices the same.
Correct.
And proposal D, uh, remove the fence to not necessitate an extra guard and raise, uh, the prices fifty cents per admission, and how much?
Ten dollars for the season pass.
Ten dollars for the season pass. Uh, Dominic and I discussed this. My thought was our, our best bet, although not the cheapest bet, would be, uh, uh, C. Uh, option C, which is to remove that fence so that an extra lifeguard is not needed, but it would keep the pool prices the same. Uh, in meeting with members of the public, their number-one concern of the Y taking over was the pool prices. Uh, and it's gonna cost the city a thousand dollars more to keep the pool prices lower. Uh, but right now, we're already subsidizing the pool at a loss of about eighty-five hundred a month, is that?
For the year?
Or, I'm sorry, eighty-five hundred a year, as, as an approximation of the last number of years?
Sure.
I, um, got ten thousand, about ten thousand.
Was it?
So, I don't know. As of September, that's the year end for the last year.
How long has it been since crisis was raised at the pool, Debbie?
Um, about two years, maybe three years ago. It hasn't been a real long time.
Can you ask your question? It's really not in regards to swimming pool, it's in regards to preferences of these things. Have you ever been approached or ever thought about taking over the sports program for the city of Buffalo?
Uh, a couple, uh, council members and, and actually, uh, I talked to a couple people, yes, sir, about that. And I think that that's something that we would do, we, the Y would definitely be interested in. We'd do a similar proposal. When we started on this, I think the mayor and Wayne and I can't remember, I think Christie was there. Uh, the mayor laid out several specifics that he wanted as far as program for the pool would stay the same or similar, rates, he laid out very specific things that he wanted that helped us design this. We would do the same thing as far as the park and rec program. If you wanted to allow us to, to partner with you in that regards, uh, we'd certainly be interested in doing something like that.
And, and Dominic and I have talked about that as an end and this is obviously getting our feet wet, no pun intended, and, uh, we're, we're both dedicated to future discussions about the Y taking over our sports programs. I mentioned to Dominic, we have some nice restrooms for, uh, the future Y soccer field.
Brand new concessions, saying that the parks are beautiful, yeah, beautiful, I said, for the community.
I think you could do a better job of it than we do.
Uh, it sounds like just from the, the sirens and the, the sewers and everything like that, you know, park and recs type stuff can be what the Y does, you know, we invented basketball, pool filtrations, uh, swim lessons, all that stuff, those are all kind of founded and, and we just, we're experts in that kind of at the Y. We're still baby Y here in Buffalo, but can move with all the history and experience of the Y. The, the city of Buffalo has a lot of things on its plate right now. This is just a great way, I think, for us to partner, just better serve the community.
You let this over, Randy, what do you, what did you suggest?
I, I think C is going to be the best, best option. It's, it, it's just a matter of removing that fence between the kiddie pool and the big pool. Uh, and I don't see any negatives behind that. Uh, but, but it's also going to keep our costs, uh, for our citizens the same.
We're still responsible for, um, some maintenance and utilities. I, I think this would actually save us a little bit of money if we went with option C. I could be wrong, I, I'm not a manager.
Basically, the way that this was wrote up, and if this is something that you approve, then we'll get the law, we'll get the Y MCA lawyer to write up, uh, something more detailed and have your lawyer look through it and it'd be a little bit more detailed. But basically, capital improvements, things that the city owns that need to be fixed would be responsibilities of the city. Light bulbs, um, need a new rescue tube, that type of pool chemicals, uh, foam, that, that would all be Y MCA responsible, things that we're using up, concession stuff. We'll do the same things that, uh, we're both vendors with Coke. We do the same things that you are, keep the services the same.
Okay. I would make a motion that we would, um-
Is there a time on this? I mean, uh, you, that you can back out or the city can back out? Or is this perpetual from here until?
Proposal that, that I'm assuming that we're going to still move forward with, but my understanding was, mayor said, start out with one year, see how we do. Um, it could be something that cities like, no, what, this is not what we wanted. Could be something the Y is like, oh, this isn't working. Or it could be something that you're not saving as much as what you thought or the Y is maybe not saving as much as what we thought. Uh, and then after that, it would be up for review and then-
Renewable.
I mean, that's, it sounds, I don't know what the agreement says.
We don't have an agreement just yet, it would be up to-
Yeah, approve this plan and then he would work on an agreement with his attorney.
And, and the term would be one year. One, one summer, see how it works and then-
Renewable on both parties.
I mean, I don't know what kind of commitment the Y needs, but I mean, I don't think approving this, I mean, I think y'all can just tell the Y that, let's see the agreement and we can talk about those terms. I mean, and that's what you need to approve. I mean, unless, unless the Y needs some sort of assurance of, hey, we are interested in looking at your agreement. Um, do, do you need that, Dominic?
No, what, all, only thing we're looking for is, if I'm going to pay the Y's lawyer to, to move forward, I just wanted to know what direction to move forward. We'll move in whatever direction the city wants to, one year, two year. Uh, that's really up to the, the city, but things like, you know, if you would've said, you know what, we're not going to pay for the water and the city, the, the electricity at the Y, then we just kind of go back and forth to try and figure out budgetarily where are we going to be at? So that's kind of what I wanted to present to the city at this time.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to have the, if you want to say, let's see your proposed agreement for C, I'm fine with that as a motion, but I think that some of, probably a lot of these terms that they're going to propose, lots of them we'll be fine with, but some are going to be subject to negotiation. Probably us looking at financial aspects of it, the Y looking at financial aspects of it and seeing if we can reach an agreement, so.
We've already, this is, uh, we've gotten financials from the, the pool operations up until this year.
I, I didn't know that, Jess.
I'm sorry. The way I understand it, they've seen all the financials, uh, this is, the way I understood this program, the only thing, question I had with it was the term, that it wasn't something that was, nobody can opt out of for one year, so one year renewable lease agreement.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna open it approximately the same time, based on school entrance, uh, when school ends and school begins. Um, that's how we're going to open it, same way you guys do. We'll do it for one year, we're one hundred percent bought into doing that if you approve that. We'll, we'll basically have a, a proposal or a, a legal agreement that the same one will base, basically take something we use at Monette, Casville, Oliver, or Pierce City. The Y MCA has partnerships with all those and Lebanon, and we'll convert that to make-
Build us one like Oliver's, right?
What's that, I'm sorry.
Are you going to build us a pool like that?
They've raised taxes to do that, if, if the city wants to do that. I, when I first stepped into Buffalo, they said, don't raise taxes on.
So, af- after, I mean, it's okay to approve this plan to go ahead and move forward as far as contacting the attorney and the next step?
I guess I, maybe I'm out of the loop here. I don't like approving this proposal because I don't know what their agreement's going to look like as far as their provisions for each of these go legally. Um, is it a lease agreement of the premises? I mean, there, there are lots of questions I have, so I mean- I, I, I guess the, I guess the, the motion would need to be, uh, which, of A, B, C, and D, which plan do we want to engage in further negotiations with the Y on? I agree.
There we go. That's my motion.
Let's go forward and-
I'm not trying to be devil-
No, you're, that's all right.
To look into it, come back next month with the final, with the final, yes, legal terms of lease purchase and-
Of, of which?
One month from today and-
I think Christie said C.
C.
Okay. Okay.
Put the paperwork together, come back, let's look at it, let's approve it, and that'll give you four or five months to hire your lifeguards, be ready to go.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll make a second to that motion.
All right. I'll call for a vote.
Jess?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Wayne?
Hi.
I'll come back as soon as possible with the sports proposals.
Well, as soon as the city's ready to start talking about that, we could, we might have to come across.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have an ordinance proposal, bill number twelve dash oh four, an ordinance repealing sections one-one-five point four-five-oh, one-one-five point four-six-oh, one-one-five point four-seven-oh, one-one-five point four-eight-oh, one-one-five point four-nine-oh, one-one-five point five-hundred, one-one-five point five-ten, uh, et al., relating to purchasing and enacting a new chapter one-four-six called Purchasing Policy. My turn? Yes, sir. Okay. Um, just for clarification, normally I don't stand up, but since this is mine, there are a couple of changes, if everyone has the one that Mr. Stafford passed around, not the one with the highlighting at the end, that's a previous version. Um, there are still a couple of changes in here that Jess and I talked about before the meeting that I want everyone to be clear on what it is that we're talking about here. If you all will turn to page three, specifically section one-four-six, zero-eight-zero. This is purchases level two, and it says more than five hundred but less than two thousand five hundred dollars. My understanding is that Mr. Stafford wants that to be one thousand five hundred dollars. So there will be a change in the title of that section to one thousand five hundred dollars and then on lines one and two of that paragraph, that'll be changed to one thousand five hundred dollars. That's the first change. The second change shows up on page five, section one-four-six, one-three-zero. This is the emergency procurement section. Um, I had a blank there because I wasn't certain what the amount was. Again, Jess is proposing five thousand dollars for emergency expenditures. Finally, the two new sections from whenever the board last reviewed this are sections one-four-six, one-five-zero, and one-four-six, one-six-zero. And what these two sections purport to do, these are new from the last time we talked about this. The first one is, you know, the situation we've seen recently where there are goods or equipment for sale at a publicly advertised auction. And this gives basically, under city ordinance, the board, the power to authorize a city employee or representative to go to that auction and bid for the equipment or goods. And it avoids the competitive bidding issue that I, uh, that we have been seeing come up in the past three or four council meetings. Um, the one change that I added, and you all are welcome to discuss, is, um, I added a provision in there talking about not paying more than commercially reasonable prices. That is a protection there for the board and the taxpayers so that, um, you know, the board isn't authorizing a city employee to go out to an auction and pay way more than what the value of the equipment is. I think there's a lot of different ways y'all could do that, you know, look at other, uh, types of equipment before you send an employee out to an auction to say, you know, what is this type of thing bringing out in, you know, the stream of commerce? One-four-six, one-six-zero, uh, addresses the issue of the purchase of used equipment. As the board knows, uh, we have bid a number of, uh, put out a number of bids or requests for bids on used, uh, vehicles, specifically used equipment. It's very difficult, you don't get, uh, anybody responding to those. I know that there's been a couple of those the past couple of months. And so what this does is similar to the auction provision, this permits the board to authorize the purchase of used equipment without doing the competitive bidding procedures. The only provision in there is that, once again, it's not going to exceed fair market value, whatever the, uh, used price is. So I mean, the blue book would be a good, uh, resource for the board to look at that before you go and say, yeah, go buy that, uh, used vehicle, um, and say, what's it, you know, what's the value in the blue book? And there are similar other evaluators out there that you can use. Jess, it's your changes, but I didn't mean to steal your-
No, that's it, because that's, that's what we have. We have the problem of trying to buy a truck and trying to find a light truck and make sure that it's right. Finding used equipment, it doesn't, I mean, if we, as Christie said, if we buy it from the state, it's a different situation, but we can't always find what we want, uh, from the state of Missouri, tractors, equipment, anything, uh, that can run any, you know, within a reason. Gives us, as long as we have the money within the budget, to make those procurements for the city as we see fit and quit the argument and buy it and if that's what Roger needs and we agree that the price is right, let's, let's purchase it. If we don't agree, it's, it's like Gus's truck, if we had decided tonight that that was an individual, uh, if we didn't like it, we just don't buy it. And if this, if Gus's had been somewhere else, we'd have to go out and say, give us a truck that's got a utility bid on it, that's got a hundred and forty-seven thousand miles, and tell us what you'll sell it to us for. Well, you may get a bid and you may not get a bid and it's just trying to simplify it. It all sort of states in here that we do not have to take low bid. Within this provisions of this ordinances, we do not have to take low bid. Of course, you people, the council understands that we don't even have to have this.
Well, Jess, I think it says you have to take the lowest responsible bid.
Lowest responsible bid.
You have a question over here.
Yeah. Yeah, Jess, because I had a question, like, if we want to buy a local and it's pretty close in pricing.
It gives us the option.
And what it says specifically, I mean, these are revisions that were made whenever the board previously looked at this policy. Under the section about lowest responsible bidder, um, there are nine things laid out, criteria that the board can consider in what makes an individual bid the lowest responsible bidder. And one of those things is goods and services provided by vendors, merchants, and businesses located in the city of Buffalo and Dallas County.
And the cost of obtaining, like, if we had to give a Springfield, like, mileage and stuff like that, we could consider that also?
Right. We could try to buy as much local as this gives us, gives the city the authority that we do not have to take low price regardless of the product. We have other considerations that we can put in here. Then, we got through it, it was, of course, the last bid was on economy. You, you just don't have to take the lowest bid. But, you know, there is not a place in the statutes that says that you have to have a purchasing ordinance for a class four tank. You can just do away with this if you want to, have no purchasing ordinances and do whatever you want to. The state statutes understand, class four does not address the issue of making us bid or buy under any orders. We do this, a good city does this to make sure the citizens know where their money's going and be in control for the council to make purchases within a reasonable range. But the statutes, I mean, the other state statute doesn't tell us we have to. But a good city does these things to make sure. The reason I'm going in, we just need to make it simpler. We don't need to sit up here and be arguing about, uh, the price of a truck or, or something. We know what we need, how we want to buy it, everybody's in agreement, but have to wait six weeks to take bids. You know, that's a waste of everybody's time. More fish in government i- is what these ordinances were put in for.
The only person that's going to lose that is, is Paul making all that money with publication fees.
I hope so.
Can I ask a general question? Makes a great idea, gives you the flexibility. Is there a conflict of interest clause that'll enlarge this?
There is a conflict of interest clause in this. It's here. It's under one-four-six oh-five-oh, conflict of interest to the, to the officer's employees in the city as well as all, all employees in the city as well as the elected officials. So it is, conflict is in this. It, it's a lot, it's, it's been more pages than this when we started, it's less pages now. It is a very simple, six-page ordinance that tells us what we can do and how we can purchase. And simplifies a lot of things.
And just to be clear, you know, as far as other than used equipment, you know, for purchasing anything new, there's still competitive bidding, um, in there. So I mean, it's not like the city's going to go for every single purchase and avoid the competitive bidding. And it's set up on a four-tier, um, amount for different, um, levels of bidding, you know, for purchases under fifteen hundred dollars, then, um, somebody can call, uh, three different vendors and say, you know, what is, you know, what's your price for fifteen widgets? And that way, you know, you can still get a competitive amount of fifteen widgets for the city, but you don't have to put it out for bid in the newspaper for five days.
If we were going to buy a brand-new truck, or a brand-new tractor, we want a hundred-horse tractor, four-wheel drive, select a speed, you would advertise those because they're all light. They're all brand-new. So new equipment is an easy thing to get a competitive bid on. Used equipment, it's like a friend of mine who was in the car business said, everybody in the world knows what a new car costs, but nobody knows what a used one's worth. So, I mean, in that theory, that, that applies back here too. It's just, uh, the best that we can do with, but try to make it as simple as possible for the benefit of the council, benefit of the city, make sure that we're protecting our money. And, and spending it as, as stewards of the city that they've elected us to do. I think it's just a lot easier, no arguments, here it is. Spend it this way, you get out of bounds, you're not going to get your bills approved.
I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance. You've looked at it, you revised it, I mean, I think it's pretty good, it simplifies things. So I would make a motion that we adopt- So I would make a motion that we adopt the new ordinance and repeal the old ones.
With my changes, that I verbalized.
The verbalized changes, right.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, I'll call for a roll of the
Wayne? Wayne?
Well
Oh, sorry.
As of now, no, because I was requesting some discussion. We were given that opportunity.
Well, I'll back up, instead of calling for a roll, I'll open the floor up for discussion.
I think the ordinance is great. The only, the only issue I have with everything is in, I'd like to see some language to the effect of purchases in the ordinary course of business, under level one and two. I made it pretty clear that there was one purchase that I didn't like. That's not, that may not be clear, but this, I think, anticipates sales and purchases within the ordinary course of business of the city of Buffalo, and not something that might be considered by some off the wall and by others. Now, I, there's no definition of that, and I don't wanna open a can of worms. I just wanna say what bothers me. And I don't, I don't particularly want purchases on things that are not city business, whether it be hiring jury or something that you my way of thinking is not in the ordinary course of business. I don't know that we can go back to change that, and I don't know that Travis would necessarily understand what I'm trying to convey in the, in the ordinary course of business without adding a section on, a definition on the section. And I think it'll work just fine. I think that's, that's probably nitpicking a little bit, and I have no problem with that. That would be my only consideration.
I have problems arguing with an attorney, I normally lose. But, in your case, I will. You know, we have the final say-so on any purchase. You can go out here and buy a new truck, and I don't care, but you're not gonna get paid for it.
But not under $1,500?
No, not under $1,500.
And that's, that's what I'm saying.
But you'll get rent amended, so, so I mean, if you wanna take the heat, go spend the money. I don't think there are any free passes here for even less than $1,500.
At this point, in light of the last several motions, I don't anticipate
Well, I don't think, you know, and I agree with you, I appreciate the fact that you said. I think there's so, there are certain things that we cannot put into printed word, and some things have to be assumed. And I think that you're right, and your assumption, and I agree with you. I don't know exactly how we will change the ordinance to itemize those items less than $1,500. We have to put faith in somebody.
And when I, point, two comments. One, ordinary course of business is overly broad, and you know that. And second, mayor's learned his lesson.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear, I'm ready to roll.
We're good, we're good. And Wayne's referring to the art that was purchased, and that's understandable.
I have a question real quick. I didn't get a chance to read over the whole thing that passed enough right there. Does this take into account bidding larger jobs, or any jobs for that matter? Say you want that same truck worked on? Are we talking about labor bids? Is this gonna do away with, say, Locust Street project, for instance? Is this gonna take into account jobs of that size, where we're not necessarily have a bidding process that we would consider a lower bid, or what we're getting for value?
It should be goods and services, but
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a, there are state bidding requirements for construction-type projects. This is a purchasing policy. So, I mean, we're mixing apples and oranges a little bit, whenever you start talking about the Locust Street-type project.
Right, and that's why, I just wanna be clear, what this was going to cover. I began, I didn't get a chance to look at that fast enough.
Sure, because if you start talking about selecting architects, engineers, there are state statutes that address what you need to do as a political subdivision for that. Same thing with construction. If you hired a construction management company to do a construction project, there are state statutes on that. But as Mr. Stafford said, as far as state statute goes on purchasing policies for equipment, goods, there isn't anything for fourth-class cities. And so that is the distinction, and I mean, as we address, you know, as the board comes across different issues, I mean, somebody may ask, hey, does our purchasing policy apply to this? Or are there some other standards out there? And so whenever you start talking about a vehicle being worked on, this is probably going to apply to that, but construction, probably not.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to see where it crossed over at, and so, you know, can be used later on to purchase something way more expensive than what it was originally for.
No, the motion and the second, is there any further discussion? All right, I'll close discussion and call for a roll of the vote.
Wayne?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Jim?
Christie? Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
First reading passes. I'll call for a second reading, is there a motion?
Make a motion, second need to be approved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, I'll call for, is there any discussion? No, I'll for a roll.
Jess?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Jim?
Wayne?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
All right, this ordinance passes, we have repealed and replaced.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure that with your ability to memorize, we haven't done this so closely.
All right, that's all we have as far as business for open meeting.
I make a motion that we go into pursuit to section 610-21. Close meeting for litigation.
I have some discussion on that. It's my understanding that that is in regards to allegations that the city is violating some sunshine laws. And Mayor Mead specifically requested that I contact the Attorney General and get them involved in educating us, because we have a disagreement in regards to an issue that I feel is a violation of the sunshine law. And Mayor Mead also mentioned that he welcomes scrutiny. So I would request that the board leave the meeting open, and allow citizens to be a part of this discussion.
Can I ask, is there a legal action against the board? No, is there a cause of action against the board?
Well, possibly, and that's
But is there a cause of action against the board?
Let me, I'm gonna stop this right now. Under 610-021, subsection one, I'll read it for everybody. Actually, I'll read the whole provision. Except to the extent disclosure is otherwise required by law, a public governmental body is authorized to close meetings, records, and votes to the extent they relate to the following. Subsection one, legal actions, comma, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body, and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys.
And it, that, yes, and it's, but it is not a requirement, it's permitted.
That is correct.
And I'm requesting that the board allow the citizens to
I have a motion, I have a motion on the board, I have a motion on the floor.
Okay, well, I'll call for a second, then we'll go into
Make a motion, it was your request.
I have a motion.
I'll second Jess's motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second, and I'll open the floor for discussion.
If, if we indeed do welcome scrutiny and want to be transparent, I do not see any reason we cannot allow the citizens to stay here while we have this discussion.
And I'll say, I mean, I'm, I am objective, and I represent the city, but as your attorney, if we discuss this in open session, nothing that we say, nothing that I say to you is privileged, as far as attorney-client privilege goes. And I would make your decision as you see fit. But I just have to advise you that anything that we discuss in open session will not be privileged.
And if we've done nothing wrong, then we should have nothing to hide.
Well, I agree with both Christie and Travis. I will state that every time I meet with a client, unequivocally, I explain attorney-client confidentiality. And from time to time, they will insist that their mama sit there with them. And I always, depending on the nature of the case, urge them to not have mama sitting there with them. It creates a little bit of tension and a little bit of hindrance to my client being open and forthright, forthcoming with me. So I certainly understand attorney-client confidentiality, and I think that's important.
Can I ask what the catalyst of the closed session is? For those of us who aren't aware of what would be, what is the closed session is even about? I'm assuming it's about the sunshine law, and how, what's different? How, how did it come about this meeting as opposed to last month's meeting or the meeting before that? What, has there, something happened, or has something been addressed? It's my, my understanding, you contacted the Attorney General's office?
Yes.
So is that the discussion, or has something, has something happened to make this? I guess I don't understand why, why there is a closed session, or what, what is, could possibly be discussed.
If there are allegations that we need to discuss with our city attorney, the sunshine law allows us to go and do a closed meeting.
So, I'm assuming that there has been allegations that there's been
We could be gonna go in and buy a piece of real estate.
But we're not, because it's stated for litigation.
But we do not have to announce the reason.
You have to announce the
You only have to announce the subsection for which it is
Yes, and this is litigation.
Is there any more discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Jim?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Christie? No, James?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
All right, we'll go into closing